Be with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in law, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. This is our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. This is our special meeting. Here it is. To discuss the draft sign ordinance. I'm gonna step it on your toes.
No, no, go right ahead.
All right, so this is what should be the last of these sort of special meetings regarding this particular item here. We've we've gone through a great deal. I'm looking for it. And there's the draft. Uh, I gotta take it out. Let's see if I have any folder from before. Uh, but Alex, where do we actually you told me, Alex, where did we?
Yes, that's a good question. So we left off basically the supervisors and funding commission wanted me to put this in the draft ordinance.
Draft ordinance.
It's a working draft. It's not even a draft yet. It's a working draft for discussion purposes for tonight. It's in the binder.
It's this one.
If you open up the binder. So this is color coded. So basically now it isn't that form. It's in a working draft form and it's color coded for discussion purposes. So basically, anything that's blue, you all need to discuss tonight. And I've queued at there's about maybe fifteen fifteen parts of this working draft. That need to be discussed and probably best for all of our time this evening to just kind of jump right into it.
Jump right into it, Alex.
Okay, so if you turn to page three, you should see the page numbers in the bottom of there.
Yay.
Okay.
There we go.
So the first change is is to so currently in the code ordinance is chapter nineteen is signs and billboards, but this does not actually this whole draft model ordinance never uses the word billboards. And so you might want to change that chapter to just signage.
Which page are you on here?
Uh, three.
Section nineteen, you said?
There you go. Yeah.
But the chapter nineteen in the code of ordinance is chapter nineteen.
I think it's a good idea.
This is section one of the.
Yeah, okay.
Draft one. By the way, I have put a few notes in section eight and nine about billboards. You can get to that after you do this.
Yeah, we I have actually all of your comments, Robert, have been incorporated into tonight's discussion. So everything that you commented on.
I may have some more.
Okay, yeah. Um, okay. So the next one is applicability. And this is really a question for Ron. So township had asked Ron whether or not there should be a section in this ordinance that is called applicability. And and if no, then you can strike it. Or if yes, what should it say? Because there's some confusing language in the current draft, which basically says any sign erected, altered, maintained after the effective date of the ordinance shall conform to the following regulations. But then there is another as Ron pointed out, there's some confusion because there's a nonconforming section in section twenty signs on the premises of legally nonconforming uses. So there's a little bit of an issue there. So that's why I think it's really.
How is there an issue? A nonconforming use gets to gets to continue forth. Why is there an issue?
Oh, I I just didn't know if it should be separated like that. But that, you know.
I mean, nonconforming use is permitted. And if you change your nonconforming use, you gotta you gotta come up to whatever the standards are at the time that you change your nonconforming use.
Right, because they're all just not conforming sign and then not conforming property, et cetera. So as long as we keep that dichotomy there, we should be.
Yeah, that should be all right.
I I think, can I jump in here? Sorry. Hey, guys, it's Michael. I'm sorry I'm not there. I'm, uh, I've got this stomach bug and I've been in bed. I've been in bed all day. Um, oh, well, on this on this point, um, we, one of the reasons why we were sort of asking a question here is because there are some definitions of certain types of signage that when they become a temporary sign, I I don't know how they relate to nonconforming or not, because we in our definitions are saying, well, a temporary sign can only be up there for a certain number of days. And therefore, even if it's quote unquote, nonconforming, and it's been there since before the ordinance, if you then, once the ordinance is in place, reach the time period ninety days by which in the new ordinance, that sign would have to be removed, can we not now remove that sign? Because while it was non while it was uh, maybe conforming before the day that it started is quote unquote, nonconforming. Um, but because it was it's technically a temporary, um, and then you are giving it its ninety days, can we then go and remove it? That's the big point in question around this 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 point. So I don't know, Ron, if you can shed some light on that little nuance.
Well, again, are we going to consider those as nonconforming signs? Are we going to consider them temporary signs? Because they make a.
Well, right now, they might be considered, right now, they're not defined as such. They're not defined in any way. But in the new ordinance, so I'm telling me talk about a flag. Um, a a flag banner, okay? I don't know how it's defined right now. I don't think it's defined at all in our current ordinances. We have defined it as a temporary sign. Um, therefore, by the rules, it would need to have uh, it does not need a permit, but you can put it up for a certain number of days. Um, and then you have to take it down. If you keep it up for longer than ninety days, the township can make you take it down or take it down ourselves. So then the question is, if that sign, which before was not defined as temporary, um, and has been up there for years. All right, well, fine, you can't take it down on day one, but can you take it down on day ninety? Because regardless of whether it was there legally or not before, it is now defined as a temporary sign and it's been in there for ninety one days, so it can be removed.
I don't know. That that might be that might be a bit dicey, if you will. I mean, if you're talking about a nonconforming sign that had been there prior to the adoption of the ordinance. Again, that's why I'm saying, are we doing not conforming? Are we doing temporaries? I'm looking through the ordinance to see if I can get to the sections dealing with the nonconforming things. But again, this specifically for this section that we're talking about on page three, it says any sign erected, altered, or maintained shall conform to this ordinance. So if our ordinance says we can do what you are talking about, Michael, then we can do it.
Yeah, because that section also says that if it's been there before, it can be there forever. And I just don't see why we have to state that at all. Um, I I mean, this particular issue is a massive issue because there are many, many of these signs. And it's sort of one of the main reasons why many people have asked us to draft this is some of these quote unquote temporary signs. Um, I think, I mean, we're gonna have to, when the time comes, we'll have to look at them individually and see if they might not have been ever legal in the first place. And it was just an enforcement issue. Um, well, but it's not exclusively it, Scott. It's not just it. There are some cases where it's not black and white. And so I want to try to get this as black and white as possible on this particular issue. And I would like on day ninety of this ordinance in place for some of these temporary signs that are really temporary, they're falling over. I would like us to have the ability to go and remove them and return them to their owners. I just want to make sure we are as protected as possible to do that.
I don't understand quite exactly what the problem is. You can't get nonconforming use rights in something that was never permitted in the first place.
Well, I think that maybe I'm maybe a misunderstanding, but it says here on one oh one, any sign erected, altered, or maintained after the effective date of this ordinance, which sort of implies that if they were erected, altered, and retained before the date of this ordinance, they should they don't necessarily have to conform to the following regulations. That's what it says on page three under applicability. I think.
And it shouldn't say that.
Yeah, I think I kind of agree unless.
You're basically you're basically making things, you're approving their nonconformity by creating this new ordinance. And I don't want to do that.
Well, I suppose if you want, you can get rid of after the effective date of this ordinance. I'm not sure if that causes it to be subject to attack later. But if you take that language away, then it simply says any sign altered has to conform with this ordinance.
Yeah, that that would be my preference. I again, I don't know how I mean, it's possible someone will come after us legally if we take down their ripping um, flagged sign. And and then in this case, Scott, I'm referring to a sign that might already be on their property. I'm not talking about a sign that's on a roundabout or anything like that, but it's fine. It's on the property. And there could be a way in which it was conforming. Um,
I don't see how. We've had a sign ordinance in this township for forty five years in some form or another. Those flags haven't been there for fifty years. I don't see.
No, but you're allowed to have you're allowed to have signs. Um, the problem with that is based on our our current ordinance. It's not that that particular sign is not legal. It's that they have chosen to have too many signs. So it could be the sign on the side of their wall that's not legal. It could be that sign. It's just a little bit, it's not as 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 clean as being like, it's very clearly this one's very clearly illegal. Well, something on there was not allowed. But was it that one? Or was it just the fact that they have too many?
Well, but but Scott is right, Michael, in the sense that if, you know, you're talking about a nonconformity, you don't get a nonconformity for something that was illegal to begin with. So if the signs were not properly there from before, uh, then, you know, you you have no nonconforming.
Why can't we just say that in the ordinance?
Yeah, I know that. I know that. I've said this three times now. I'm talking about signs in which their nonconformity is not clear. Oh, sorry, in which their legality before, um, it's possible they were legal. Um, but there are these temporary signs that are, um, moving forward or not. They're not sorry, they're not that they're not legal. They just they have to. They're only allowed to be there for ninety days. Uh, but I think we should move on because we're gonna otherwise we're gonna be here forever. But I do think we should scrap that one sentence.
Yeah, I can just modify that sentence just to say any sign erected, altered, and maintained shall conform to following regulations. Good. Okay. All right, everyone get on that one?
Mm hmm.
Okay, next one is Ron's memo number eight. Um, for the intent section of the ordinance, Ron, um, suggested adding two lines to this, one of them stating that it shall prohibit postings on public property by the adoption of even handed content neutral language and manner. And the other sentence was, uh, to narrowly tailor an instant ordinance to serve a significant government interest to ensure the safety and security of the traveling public.
That's just the flag waving in the policy so that if the ordinance gets challenged, you can say, oh, no, you know, in the whereas clause is this was basis. One of the basis about why we did this.
Yeah, the township already considers this. Yeah, yeah. It's in legislative intention, actually.
So if it says narrowly tailor, doesn't that indicate that the entire purpose of the ordinance is just to correct the?
No.
Okay. Right, that was my only question on that.
No, that's fact, that's that language is out of case law. I don't remember what they did, but that's out of reach.
Two attorneys are saying no, so that's a little bit.
Maybe you should not move on if two attorneys are saying.
Okay, next one is, uh, the the committee had discussed.
Oh, down here.
Interactive signs, basically. Um, you want you want to keep this as prohibited? Like if you have five signs in a row and they say con once, then twice, then three times. Do you want that in the township? Or you want to avoid that?
That's the bermashave, uh, yeah, the old berm, yeah, right, the old bermashave.
I think we should outlaw it like it is now.
I agree.
Which is? Which is? How is it now?
Well, you remember bermashave?
Yeah.
Okay, there's one side after another. It's like a little bubble.
The punchline is bermashave.
Right, we're saying that should be outlawed. It is now. So we should keep that as outlawed.
Okay.
One sign after another.
Cool.
Unless you want to do the poetry, then we could make a special exception for you as a writer.
Hikoons. My own self is now.
Oh, my poetry starts there. Once was a man from Nantucket. I know that one too, right? Yes, we should probably move on.
All right. So what are we doing with that? We keeping it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go. Next one is on page five. And it's Ron's memo. Now, this is a pretty big one, actually. So this this addresses political signs. So basically, Ron, do you want to do you want to?
Well, tell me, tell me where I end here.
Number you're you're number two on the memo.
So I have here, this is what I put in my memo. Perhaps the township consider that no signs of any type be placed either in the township where the pen dot rights of way. There is this restriction would not be content based and avoids the issue with time limits on political signs. Uh, this may, of course, create a location issue for street signs and directional signs and so forth. I know that some private homeowners have restrictions on political signs. However, these are private institutions that are not subject to the constitutional free speech protections of the constitution. So basically, I'm saying, do you want to consider not allowing political signs in any of the rights of ways, whether pen dot.
Are we allowed to do that?
No, I think it's unenforceable.
Totally unenforceable. Yeah, it's unenforceable, but it's even allowed. But.
Well, again, I attached to my memo, a a a memo from a pen dot that talks about what they can or cannot do. But again, something that I wanted to make sure we were on the same page on.
What does Reed versus Gilbert say about that? The Supreme Court is saying, I assume that it doesn't refer to you can go to one place, but not another.
Well, again, but you're you're talking about content based restrictions. This is not content case. This is saying we don't want to.
But Reed versus Gilbert wasn't was content based saying you cannot restrict where something goes and what the rules are, uh, if it's a content sign, right?
Let me just look at.
Two thousand fifteen Supreme Court.
I think it was about it was about you can't rule you can't limit something based on its content. And Ron saying if you just say that nothing is allowed there, um, then you're not being exclusive. However, I I don't I don't sort of think we should be doing that. But I just wonder. I mean, I don't know the case law, but if you're basically saying nothing is allowed to go there. However, if there are a a personal opinion, you know, including politics signs, then you can and and but they would be limited to a certain amount of time, or you can't you can't do that. You're being more you're allowing more, um, sort of political signs than any other type of sign.
Well, my my point is whether
It's supposed to be that way.
Whether the the ruling, um, said anything about where the signs could go. If it doesn't, it seems like they could go anywhere. Ron?
Well, that that's again, I'm looking at the pen dot guidance for political. Well, that, that's, again, I'm looking at the pen dot guidance for political signs. And this guidance is saying any political sign or banner placed within the right of way is considered an illegal incursion. Now, I don't know if I buy that, but that's what pen dot is saying, you know, in their, in their actual guidance for political sign.
Yeah, I don't know which, what they read, but it seems like we ought to read the court decision to see if that's legal or not.
Then let me ask this then. Are we concerned that, that within right of ways and such, these signs are going to be up for an inordinate period of time? Is that what we're worried about? Because if so.
Some of them already are. There's still signs out there right now for the twenty twenty four election.
Sure, but aren't all, are in essence the ones in the rights of way that we're talking about? We're not talking about off-rights away of people's houses. We're talking about in the rights of way. In essence, aren't they all temporary signs that we have already as temporary signs, uh, of provision in the ordinance?
We do have that in there and then, but there's this separate section around, around signs of personal expression, um, that gets exempt because it was felt we couldn't enforce it because of this case law, but we could also just remove that section if we think it is enforceable.
Well, again, th- this section really isn't that prohibitive. It says that you can place them in the right of way for not more than thirty days in advance of the election. And then they are to be removed within five calendar days following the election.
That probably should be more than thirty if I, but maybe not, knowing what's typically out there, but.
I, I agree with you. I think it's more than thirty. But let me ask you something else. Doesn't our, a part of the ordinance that covers abandoned or no longer, um, you know, e- existing businesses being advertised cover something that is for an election that's already going on and it's over?
Yeah, but that's like a hundred and eighty days, so it's a lot longer.
That's all right.
Well, again, it was a point of discussion. We can keep it as is. There, again, there's nothing that's very prohibitive about it. And it prevents any potential attack because Scott is right, you know, it could be subject to attack if you start saying you can't put these things anywhere. Or anywhere within the right of way, even though the pen dot guidance is pretty clear that you, they say you can't, but.
They're not, but that.
Just forgive me for missing this. I was presenting the township at the county's semi-quinsentennial kickoff. Is, what is the actual nature of the debate or it seems like?
Whether you can put, uh, political signs and religious signs in the right of way.
Okay.
And Michael and I think, I think are agreeing that they could be in the right of way. And also there's no prohibition about how long they can be there. And what Scott is saying is we already have a provision with sort of saying that, um, an abandoned sign or sign advertising business that's no longer there can be taken down. And it seems this, this should apply to at least a political sign after the election.
No, because a political sign is a, is a freedom of expression, it's not time limited. You can say Biden, you can say Trump forever, even if it's a hundred years from now, because you're expressing your interest in that person. I, unless it's very specifically said on, you know, November seventh, you know, twenty twenty-four, make sure you go and vote, you know, then, then maybe you can make an argument. But I don't think, I think we're getting off the point, and the point was just, is it okay for us to put a time delay nation in there um, for political signs? And it seems like it doesn't necessarily hurt for us to do that. So I say we just leave it, but I think we should increase it from, what, what's the standard in the county? Is it thirty days, forty-five, sixty days?
Places do thirty days. Hamilton is known for being forty-five days, but.
I would say forty-five.
My thought is this is probably not what we're gonna have Bureau Veritas police the most, so.
Yeah, fine, then let's just leave it and carry on.
Maybe more.
Says that government must show, must show that its regulation is necessary to serve a compelling state interest and is narrowly drawn to achieve that end.
Yeah.
Okay, so what are we doing? Leaving forty-five or what are we gonna do?
Just leave it at thirty and carry on. If someone puts, like, as Jacob said, if someone put it, puts it up for thirty-five days ahead of something, I, I doubt we'll send out the troops for that.
Well, okay, so the next section is the very next page. Ron has two more comments. One of the first one is Ron's number seven comments. I didn't know where else to put it in today's discussion, so I'm just putting it in general regulations. And that is with regards to your, we might already covered this, general signage and right of ways and exemptions for political signs and right of way. And it references the pen dot guidance for political signs. So if you all felt that you've already beaten that for a minute, then you can move on to the next one. Or you can have that discussion again. I just figured.
No, we already talked about it.
I think, yeah, I think we should just move on to the next one, which I'm trying to remember what.
And next item is number nine, and this is in reference because, um, whether or not the township should, like a best practice, notify all the HOAs of this ordinance change if it's adopted. Um, basically, I think that was the question, Ron, is, you know, should the township send a notice to all the HOAs in the community saying, hey, by the way, we're, we understand you have some sign regulations that may be similar to the township's zoning ordinance, just FYI, we're changing all that. And whether or not that's, that's necessary, and then, right, is that, that seems to be kind of where we're at with that one. And then you responded to it.
Just a matter of whether, whether that would be something that would be a nice courtesy. I don't think we're duty-bound to do it, but you know.
Right, I think it's.
Would it be something that we would want to do as a courtesy?
I think we should say desirable. The question is how we reach some of these HOAs. I've tried and you never can find who runs them at some, with some of them.
Well, that's another.
We make the attempt.
Another issue, but the question of do we want as a courtesy, notify them or just go about our business?
Well, are.
Why not?
I don't see why we shouldn't.
But are our ordinances enforceable in an HOA?
Sure.
Well, exactly.
Correct. Our ordinances are enforceable.
It's a PRD, that's a little different deal, but, um.
Well, this is not in zoning, or is this in zoning? No, it's a standalone chapter. So does that not mean it would be enforceable in a PRD? Am I wrong?
Yes, I agree.
Hmm.
By the way, I have already noticed there's at least one, probably multiple others, where the PRDs actually specifically reference um, township signage ordinance. So they don't actually have their own signage rules. They just reference the township's one. And in some cases, we want, they might want to look at whether that includes changes to the township's, um, ordinances or the initial signage ordinance as originally passed. Cause I, from at least one that I looked at, it was not clear. So I do think we should, at a, a minimum, highlight this to HOAs if possible, and sort of highlight that little bit of information too, that your ordinances may, well, I don't know what we do as it relates to letting them know that this is not in zoning.
I think we can just write them a nice letter, attach a copy, and throw them a link.
Yep. These laws are, they're, they're public and they're out. And they're probably available.
Yeah.
All right, move on.
Okay, next one, page seven. These are Robert's comments on general signage regulations, and Robert had asked, well, Robert, I mean, do you want to maybe discuss what your comments are on D E F? Thanks, boss.
No, I, you know, I'm okay with those.
Okay.
No comment.
Okay, Robert doesn't have any comments. Anyone else have any comments before moving on?
No.
Okay. I agree with that. That brings us to page nine. Uh, page nine has yellow highlighted set tags. This is mostly just FYI, because you had discussed this in the second meeting. You wanted, A, you wanted reference to the outdoor lighting standards pending chapter, and then a sentence which basically says that if a conflict, the one that's more restrictive, shall prevail. Just, does anyone have any issues with that? Is that language acceptable to everybody and revisions?
Can we pass that without the lighting already in place, or would we have to wait for the lighting to pass first?
Ron?
That, well, you could pass it, you know what I mean? If it's, if the ordinance is not in place, it's not going to be enforceable to that ordinance.
Yeah, until the enabling is in place.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, you know, getting free rein because, oh, I guess because we say the more restrictive, so the other ordinance doesn't exist, it's not restrictive at all, but then it would just go to whatever's in this ordinance. So I think we should leave it then, even if, uh, lighting ordinance is not in place yet.
Okay. The second new text was, again, based on that same discussion, just to, just to add detail as to the foot candles still over. And this is consistent with chapter thirty-two, based on the signage. So it's, I don't, I don't think I need to read the whole thing, but it's basically just saying that the spillovering signs is the same as the spillover for any other lighting.
Any other lighting, yeah.
Okay.
I like that too. Keeps everything consistent.
Okay.
Yeah, agree on.
The next one, um, is one we actually never came to consensus on is based on T and M's review. And T and M had suggested either, so, so nits, again, what is a nit? It's a unit for the measurement of light emitted from a screen. And so if there's a internally illuminated sign or a screen that's emitting light, it's measured in nits. And T and M had suggested either set it at five hundred nits or set it at five hundred nits with the condition that it becomes a nuisance pedestrians, vehicles, or adjacent properties as determined by the township supervisors or code enforcement officer, the illumination level shall, but then be reduced to two hundred and fifty. Also, so I put that in there to give the flexibility of the township to lower if necessary. Because if you just say straight five hundred, that might be too bright. And at least under this condition, you have the option to lower it if it becomes a nuisance, but it's up to the community.
What's the, what's the objective method by which the code enforcement officer will determine that it becomes a nuisance?
The objective me, hmm, that's a, that, that's a really good question.
Let me, uh, offer something here that might solve this. I've, I've got several notes, most of on outdoor advertising signs, but this applies, um, I've taken the uh, recommendations of the Outdoor Advertising Association of America. And, uh, it seems like two hundred and fifty nits is fine. In other words, if we just forget the five hundred and say two hundred and fifty nits, that's, no.
I think ultimately it's going to be the same thing as what you were just saying, because we're not really going to enforce it unless someone's complaining anyway, and that complaint is what defines something as a nuisance effectively. If it's bothering someone, it becomes a nuisance. So, I mean, if you're gonna keep the, can change it to two fifty, I agree, you should just put it two fifty. I have no idea from a engineering standpoint, what is an appropriate number, though.
Regardless of what the appropriate number is, I think to unilaterally be able to change it is kind of antithetical to somebody's property rights. So I think we would have to have a clear process by wish to do that.
Would you change it from five hundred or?
No, no, what I'm saying is if you are talking about a reduction in any way based upon something's a nuisance, if you have one complaint, that's not enough. Because if somebody just doesn't like somebody, of course, they're gonna say, oh, this is a nuisance to me.
Correct. So, I mean, I think you should just stick to one number, whatever that is. I don't like the flexibility.
Trade associations, uh, have recommendations, and two fifty seems fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's just say two fifty.
Am I allowed to butt in here?
Sure.
Um, do we know what two hundred and fifty or five hundred nits, like, do we know what that is in, in the real world?
We do, we've looked into it.
We can see it, but I don't know that I would, you know, the, the American National Billboard Association says it's okay.
We don't want to think.
They seem kind of biased.
We don't, don't want to think of you as a nit picker.
So, so I looked in this a little bit. Five hundred's a bit bright. Two hundred and fifty's more dim.
Well.
I mean, obviously, but I, five hundred, I can't objectively say five hundred is like, you know, too LED, like it's, it's, but.
The only effective example is if you have light that had a maximum of X nits and you could control it to show somebody. I don't think there's a.
Hmm, yeah, I, I agree. And there's also a way you can convert nits into like foot candles and get like, I wasn't, I wasn't necess, I can get that to you, like I can convert it.
Christine?
I just feel like we're kind of, you know, picking another, you know.
Christine? Five hundred nits is roughly seventeen hundred lumens, which is about a hundred watt bulb.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
One nit equals three point four something, uh, loudes.
Okay, Scott, could you say that again?
Five hundred.
You said?
Five hundred, five hundred nits.
Yeah.
Is basically the equivalent of seventeen hundred lumens, seventeen thirteen, actually. Seventeen hundred lumens, which is, which is about equivalent to a hundred watt, uh, incandescent light bulb.
Thank you.
So there's.
This is about like how bright it is when you look at it. There are still, regardless of how many nits there are, there's still restrictions on light bleeding onto your other property. You still can't do that. That's a separate section. So just want to make sure we're, what we're worried about here is, is it too bright and to a, a, a car that's driving by and is blinded by it? Um, that's what this section is about.
The easy example is if you have an iPhone fifteen or sixteen, the maximum brightness that you can set is eight hundred fifty-seven nits. And the peak brightness of automatic is seventeen hundred nits. As if you have like a photo that, you know, shows the sun or some bright light source, so it reflects what, what you saw. So that's.
Yeah, so the, so the reality is two hundred and fifty is probably.
Very light.
Probably, I think, yeah.
That could spread of the issue with what's a nuisance. It's not vague. We don't have.
Yeah, you don't have to fight over every sign. Yeah, I, I think that's probably the better idea. Yes.
Okay. Flip the page. Next one is Robert had a comment on the duration of messages for Trivision boards, digital display, or message center signs.
What, what number?
It's gonna be page ten. It's gonna be the second pa, second and third paragraph there. So it should be HI.
H little i.
And so basically, the model ordinance put together a, um, a method by which, let's say you want to have five hundred feet, you're gonna put a sign up and it's five hundred feet away from, and you want people to see five hundred feet away. You then take the posted speed limit, say it's forty-five miles per hour, multiply it by that number to get feet per second. And then you take that feet per second and you, um, divide the, the five hundred feet by the speed, feet per second, and you get somewhere around eight, eight seconds, basically. And that allows for the messages on the signs to not transition too quickly, given the speed limit. I guess it, it's better for, um, you know, to prevent eclectic messages that only last for three seconds. And the drivers are like trying to read it really quick before it goes away. That's the best way I can explain this section. I kind of did plug it.
Well, let me go, again, go to the, the trade association. Um, their recommendation is eight seconds.
Okay.
And the other thing that we should say here, which I have not seen in here, is the size of outdoor signs. Because, uh, the eight-second rule is really, um, predicated on two sizes of sign. One is what's called a thirty-sheet board, which is about, uh, twelve by twenty-four, ten by twenty-four. And the other is what's called a junior board, which is, um, ten by twen, when it was smaller. I think it's eight by ten or something, um, six feet by twelve feet.
But size is set, um, in the ordinance under the quote-unquote billboard section, which is the off-premises signs. And it is based on the speed limit.
That, that's where we are with speed limits. But what I'm saying is, um, we only have two types of boards. The only other kind of board that we would ever have is what's called a, you know, a superboard or several names, but only if we pass something that says you can have those along Interstate eighty. Otherwise, they would never be in the township. So with these two.
You have, I mean, you, you have standards of what kind of size boards there are, but it doesn't preclude someone from going up and building their own, which is why the ordinance stipulates, um, size based on, on speed limit, as I recall.
What I'm suggesting is this, which we don't, I don't, I don't see in there is for off-premises sides, which is really billboards, we only allow two sizes because all of these signs of different sizes are really clutter on our roads. If we had two standard sizes, that would, we, where we'd go from now on. And also with those two sizes, eight seconds is fine.
Uh, so, Robert, I have to disagree with you because the whole premise of this model ordinance uh, is around getting rid of the term billboard signs because it was too complicated. And talking about si, off-premises signs, in other words, a sign that is located on a property that is not where the business is located. That means a two-by-two or a one-by-two sign can still be considered an off-premises sign and is still, um, even though it's not your quote-unquote billboard, it is tiny and small, but it still falls under your off-premises sign regulations. If you start talking about only two signs, you've completely thrown away, you know, a huge portion of, of, of what makes this ordinance makes, make sense.
Well, I think then we should revise this. So we're talking about two different categories because billboards should only be two sizes. Nothing, that it's cluttered. If you want to talk about, uh, one-by-two signs, like you would find in a R one, R two, R three, that should be something different to discuss.
You can't have, Robert, you gotta read the ordinance. You can't have a, a off-premises sign. You can't have, Rob, you gotta read the ordinance, you can't have a, a off premises sign in. On R one, so it's, that is not the same. Off premises si- and it's not a free speech sign, off premises sign is advertising something that is not located on your property. And the way this whole sixty page document is structured is. Around, you know, location um of the sign, if you all of a sudden throw in, it can only be two signs, you, we have to rewrite the whole thing.
Well, then let's rewrite it.
Oh, come on, give me a break.
I think that for our roads, uh having signs of all different sizes is just clutter. If we had two signs, fine, and if you wanna make an exception for something uh that's specific. Fine, but you know, otherwise, you go down two oh nine and look at all the signs there, it's a, it's a, it's. It's just, it's clutter and it's uh, uh, it's unsightly.
I agree, which is why there are, if you look, if you read this new ordinance, you'll see that there are many elements that. Uh. Reduce your ability to do that.
What are they? You mean, having different speed limits and having different sized signs with speed, speed limits?
Speed limit sets your maximum size.
What's a what?
Sets your maximum size, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not in a.
This is so complicated, why not just make it easy, right? If you want three type signs, three sizes, fine, but you're just making it so difficult. For somebody to read this and decide what they can do with their business, or what they can put up, why not have to have standard sized signs? And have a standard, and by the way, this is all digital, and have a standard sized, a standard time limit on what it should be. Eight seconds seems fine.
Well, two different things.
Stabilize the digital signs, fine, you're talking about all signs, I'm not spending another year rewriting this.
I'd like to throw in that from uh nits. Uh, two hundred and fifty nits is equivalent to ambient light and it's good for a, a, a screen in a room. The recommended nits for an outdoor sign is five hundred nits.
Well.
Then, and if you're gonna put a high definition sign, then it would be a thousand nits, but they're saying that.
It's eight, it's two fifty to eight to five hundred, but I remember that includes very big signs. For the signs, side of the signs I'm talking about in billboards, which are the smaller billboards. I think we're fine with.
But you're talking about, you're talking about outside in the night, so if it's two hundred and fifty nits, it's equivalent for. For its green indoors.
Into what?
It's, it's the optimum brightness level depends on surrounding light conditions, in a very bright room, two hundred and fifty. Nits, it may not be enough, so. You talk, what I'm, what I'm, or what I'm recommending is that two hundred and fifty nits. On an outdoor sign might cause uh a driver to try and strain.
To squint?
Yeah, to squint, to see what's on that sign.
You know, this could go on endlessly.
If the recommendation is five hundred, then why?
Five hundred, it's two fifty to five hundred, that's the recommendation.
Outdoor use or outdoor.
Where are you reading from?
Reading an overview.
Well, okay, I'm reading from the Outdoor Advertising Association of America, okay?
It's kind of like the dashboard lights in your car in this, in this.
Right, you, you can, yeah, that's right, you can adjust.
Evening, they took him, so I do, I do agree with what you're saying, James, so let's keep the five hundred in the way we have it.
If you want five hundred, but I, I'm, let's go back to the question of the size of the sign.
Well, we're talking about two different things, so we resolved on the nits, are we gonna stay with two fifty or five hundred?
If you like five hundred, I.
Do you wanna keep the range? Keep the two hundred to five hundred. Are you, is that, oh, we're actually talking about three different things now, we're talking about nits, we're talking about sign size and. We're talking about duration of digital signs, so it sounded like the consensus was just put it at eight seconds for all sizes regardless, is that an accurate?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
So our township is probably sufficient.
That, yeah. Eight, okay, so eight seconds, we'll delete some of those other standards, it's the equation, shall we, eight seconds, resulting times, okay, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um.
Also, I'm talking about standards.
First for time, I, I mean, what I don't wanna do is I, I don't wanna govern people to do. Something because it's sort of the best way, if it's not dangerous or there's no reason not to. So is there a reason why seven second sign is dangerous or is not a good idea, is it's like a strobing issue and? Uh, I, I'm just trying to understand, like, I, what I don't want is a bunch of rules just there for the sake of, you know, that's sort of ideal.
I think you should be okay with the speed limits in your township. At, at just putting it at eight seconds.
I, I, the only ones that exist are eight seconds or longer.
Okay.
Yeah, if you had it, to take it to an extreme, if you had it at one second. People would be seeing this thing change constantly, they get distracted by it, which would be. So at eight seconds, in, in our township, with the speed limit, I think a max of forty five.
Yeah.
So I think eight seconds is sufficient.
Okay, and then I just wanna make sure we're saying a, a minimum of eight seconds, if someone wants to learn a sign that's indefinite, they can do that.
And, and by the way, that's a, another point of the association, that if it's too short, it's more distracting, as you're saying. So eight seconds, we resolved.
Right, so we've got, yeah, now let's move on to the size of the sign.
Well, well, if I would politely just say, let's go by size of signs, it's coming soon. We'll get to the off premise size, size is very, very soon, if I could just get through the ten vertical foot candles. Uh, that's on page ten, Robert had pointed out, asked about ten vertical foot candles, is that? And, and it's pretty.
We do another one, what about two fifty or five hundred nits, let's just resolve that.
Okay, back to.
We did.
Nit picking of the net.
Two fifty. Two fifty to five hundred range.
Keep it at two fifty to five hundred.
Can't have a range for something that you're saying is the, is the maximum. Doesn't make any sense, you're gonna enforce it.
That's fine.
Wait. Can we ascertain? Exactly how we want that to be governed, though, the range fundamentally is fine. What would cause someone to be on the higher end versus the lower end, and what is our interest in regulating that? I wanna think, I don't want to spend four years on this, but I also don't wanna keep coming back to it, so I'd like to. Have some priorities.
Well, maybe we could tie it to our light origins and say that if it doesn't violate the uh. The light ordinance or the whatever calling dark sky ordinance, then five hundred is fine, if it doesn't.
That's a good idea. That would be the objective basis by which you could reduce it, the spillover is over, you know, if it's, if it's in conflict.
The whole thing, we just went over that section.
That's already in place, anything in this or anything that's in the township can't um. Can't be brighter or, or, you know, uh, 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 against what is written in the, in the soon to be light ordinance.
Keep in mind in the paragraph before, it does say during daylight hours, it could be no more than five thousand nits. So this is more specifically in the evening, at night specifically, yeah, so I think we're good.
Okay.
As written.
All right. Um, all right, on page eleven. First paragraph, uh, it's, this is kind of an important one because this is why you, you had decided to tie the standards to the lighting ordinance. There is a standard here that says the external illumination sign within four hundred feet of a residential zoning district lot or residential, residential use. Shall not be permitted. And so there was some discussion that that might be austere for businesses, and maybe if you just add reference to the lighting ordinance, then it's just a spillover. But then if you don't have a specific footage set in place, then it becomes a complaint play situation that could take time to resolve and it can become messy. So there was a discussion about all that and I just wanted to bring it back to you, do you wanna set a, a minimum footage? Or a, a setback away from residential zoning districts for illuminated signage, or do you not want to do that?
I think it might be a good idea, uh, I, I know this, this ties into something uh. On uh, you know, the section eight, uh, which is um, this distance between signs. So maybe we should find something that's, that works for all uh possibilities here, and we have right now. Fifteen hundred feet between signs, which I think is, is, is pretty, pretty large, I would suggest, and again, this is based on. Um, Penn Dot recommendations, which say that uh, on. Uh, um, unlimited access highways, in other words, just normal highways. They recommend five hundred feet between sides, in towns, they recommend one hundred feet. Townships, three hundred feet, but I think if we use five hundred feet and also five hundred feet from, uh, what do you say, residential developments. Just as a, as a rule of thumb, five hundred between signs, five hundred from residential development. Um, five hundred from a, a school, if it's on the same road, things like that, it seems like it's pretty easy. To know that, that's one, one figure.
Robert, my, my input with this ordinance, when we were writing it, was to try to do whatever I could to limit. The number of off premises signs, because in my opinion, it just litters the rural landscape that we have here.
Well, I agree.
Yeah, I wanted to add that, that we, I think we increased that number for the exact reason that David is saying. We're basically saying, we really don't want billboards in the township. I mean, we, we are not in a situation where we can say none at all, um, but you know, the reality is. The only place you're really gonna have billboards is two oh nine, pretty, pretty much, and most of that is already. Sort of commercial property already, and therefore, they're gonna already have their own sign for their own business. So there's not a real need for um off premises signs, so why not just make it slightly more restrictive? And by saying it has to be fifteen hundred feet between signs, that, that does it.
Well, that, that's, that's good except um. The, the recommendations are going in another direction, somebody could come in and say, why are you saying fifteen hundred feet when Pendot is saying?
Because the exact reason.
Three hundred and five hundred, and, and there's another thing practically to remember here. Um, the only places, you're right, Michael, we have s- uh, possibilities outdoor signs are in the two, two oh nines. And there's plenty of signs there anyway, but um, if it was five hundred feet, um, figure, how far is it from, let's say. Uh, Interstate eighty to Country Bridge Road, because that's the only place you could put them. On eighty, because become, beyond Country Bridge Road towards Middle Smith Hill, it's all owned by Pendot, you can't do anything there anyway. So it's like, uh, you know, give a guy a break, let's put up a sign, at least give him the possibility that there's someplace to put it.
Why?
Well, because it's a, an accepted form of advertising, you're not a merchant, but there are people that want those signs.
I had a business in town, I didn't.
You, you, uh, you weren't advertising uh engineering.
I just don't think, I just don't, there's so many other ways that people can advertise, it doesn't need to be a, a, a sign on, on the side of a mountain that I wanna look at flowers and trees.
Right, real quick, I'm riveted by this. This is supposed to be page eleven, talking about the external illumination, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, I know that's not what we're talking about, but I, I wanna make sure I were.
Yes.
Answer some questions that Alex needs, so we can get this.
Four hundred feet is Jacob, is what I'm trying to get consensus on, is that, do you wanna have a four hundred foot setback for residential zoning for illuminated signage?
Yes.
Yeah, I would say five hundred, but I'm saying five hundred for everything.
I like five hundred.
Five hundred for a residential, put it there.
Yep. I go for it, okay, thank you, next comment was Robert had asked about. Illuminated signage, why, what he asked, what's the objective to dissolving images on a, on a, on a, on a digital sign that has multiple. Things that I looked into and it looks like it could distract drivers.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Good enough.
Yeah, that's a distraction thing.
Actually.
Okay, so you keep that, and then. We went right along to page fifteen. There was a discussion on, this is one that Michael had discussed in particular directional signs related to the TODS program. And the, the community wanted to come back to this topic, now this is, now we're on off premise signage now, so this is. Got a tie into a lot of what Robert and the group had been talking about the sign area, so. We are now on page fifteen, regulations by sign type off premise signage, so AKA billboards and signs that are great, okay, so. I wanna clarify that, now, in this section are directional signs that may include directional arrows, distance and title of destination, but. Can include no imagery or logos, except for those signs approved through Penn Dot tourist oriented directional signing and logo program. So, basically, do you wanna keep that in there? Or do you wanna refine it, modify it, we, we had a lengthy discussion, so I wanted to bring, come and bring back to that in case anybody's thought about it or done anything in the meantime. Talking about.
I mean, I just wanna clarify, so by definition, the way this ordinance is written. And directional signs are off premises signs, because you know, by definition, they're highlighting something that's not on that property. Um, the, it references these pens, uh, uh, Penn Dot programs because. They specifically, so anytime you have a, any of those blue signs on Route eighty, um, to get those. And to get the subsequent signs that are, um, you know, at, um, at other. Um, intersections beyond them, you, Penn Dot requires that the township has in their ordinance stating that they're allowed to be in that township. So that's why that is there, and then the other question is, what about these sort of signs that are? Um, just directional, um, and are helpful, I think. Um, without being um, too much about advertising, I think about, I mean, I drive by it every day, Buttermilk Falls and River Road. I mean, it'd be great to be able to clean that mess up, but it hasn't been done because, um, you can't really legally do it. Um, and is there a way we can make that so that that is, looks nice and is legal?
You wanna permit a nice version of what they have in Scott Run, essentially, or Delaware Water Down?
Yeah.
You wanna just keep it in there?
I'd say as written.
I'd say I'd keep that as written, because that's, that's what I would.
I mean, that's one where as an example, I mean, I, I, I may have said this last time, but you have seven hundred Wyndham units in that area. People that have never been there and they don't know where they're going, and it'd be helpful for them to be able to properly see that sign that says, oh, River Village two is down that way, great, I'm gonna go.
So you and I had a conversation well, well, um, about this during our writing of this, and my concern was, where is it? What are the limits on it, what if every business in the town put up fifty directional signs? And they were just all over the place, is there a way that we can somewhat limit it?
Yeah, and I think, do we not, and I'm sorry, I'm lying in my bed, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but. I, I believe you have to have rights or ownership over the land that it's on, obviously, is there something about the right of way as well, I don't know.
No, no.
I mean, that might be for any sign that we have in there, but. But I agree, I don't, you don't want it everywhere at every turn, I mean, obviously the ownership's gonna help with that.
Well, if you wanna do something that's, you know, as altruistic as, as it sounds, I mean, wouldn't you just put a, a limit on the. The mileage away from the sign that the attraction is or something like that?
I thought we, I thought we had, well, that's part of, yeah, TODS does that, I thought we had added some language about some sort of special permit for this, but maybe we didn't. It's a per, it's a, it still needs a permit though, um.
With a natural spot to. Talk about the next meeting, cause planning, it's gotta go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did we go backwards on this meeting or?
I don't know.
Well, we ended up, we ended up talking about page sixteen for like fifteen minutes about billboard signage, so do you wanna just? Come to a consensus on, do you wanna keep speed limits for sign sizes, is that because it's based on? It's actually based on the United States Sign Council. I looked into it, it's actually in your appendix here, the United States Sign Council has a bunch of calculations and reasons as to why it makes sense to have these posted speed limits for maximum square footage, so.
What I would suggest to compromise is this, let's put in a section specifically for signboards and billboards. In two specific sizes only, and with eight seconds turnaround and with five hundred feet between them, that's one.
If, if you're talking about lit, lit LED signs, I'm fine with that, but. Is that, you're concerned about the, the.
But Michael, I'm talking also, leave what we have only for, let's say, other sized signs and maybe define them as two or three, so that we don't have. All kinds of different sizes, but it, well, we can have a couple of different sized signs, that are smaller size if we want. But I think signboards and billboards are specific category, we only want two sizes, um, yes, I think. Everything is gonna be digital, um, it goes up from now on, so that's what it relates to, and uh, have it eight seconds and have them five hundred feet apart.
Well, I disagree with that.
Okay, I, I don't wanna cut y'all off, but it is, we do need to schedule the next meeting and leave this one open for the next time.
Yeah, why don't we all read this section? Yeah, why don't we all read this section and try to talk about it intelligently instead of?
Well, I think I made an intelligent compromise, have two different uh categories here, and in your.
So what is your goal? Is your goal to meet the requirements of the Advertising Association or this?
No, my, my goal is two things. Uh, for for signs like Michael wants, which are smaller, they have something that's specific for that. For outdoor advertising signs, to not prohibit them in a way where we can't have them. Merchants want them, let, and politicians, by the way, let, let them have at least specific sizes.